I'm here.
You're quiet now.
We will now call the meeting of the Fayette County School Corporation Board of School Trustees Business Meeting to order. We're at the Administration Building. It is Tuesday, June 12, 2018, 6:30 PM. And seeing no one here to lead us in the pledge, I'll ask everybody to rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. I'd like to start out to ask for a motion to approve the agenda as submitted and amended.
I so move.
Thank you. Chris, do I hear a second?
I'll second, Dan.
Thank you, Warren. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Are there any patron comments on agenda items? Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda, which includes the approval of minutes from the regular business meeting of 5/8/18, the personnel report, retirements, resignations, leaves of absences, et cetera, approval of the May 2018 claims, 498-55 to 501-88, the approval of the Head Start Cost of Living Grant and Budget, the approval to apply for Title I funds, the facility usage request waiver of charges, and donations. A donation of a school sign valued at $9,976 from the Fayette Central PTO, a grant of $500 from the Fayette County Foundation for the replacement of inoperable AED at CHS, a donation of $2,000 from the American Dairy Association and Nutrition Team for new coolers for the summer lunch bus. Okay. Seeing the consent agenda, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve.
I so move.
Thank you, Ann. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Lori. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to action items. Personnel report. Mr. Cirqua.
Thank you. We have several certified and extracurricular staff to recommend to you today. Mary Callahan, Life Skills Teacher at Maplewood. Ben Crawford, Chemistry and Physics Teacher at Connersville High School. Rachel Hall, Flex Teacher at Connersville Middle School. David Hopson, Industrial Technology Teacher at Connersville High School. Jason Kraus, Special Ed Teacher at Connersville High School. Lindsay Porter, Special Education Teacher at Connersville Middle School. Bettina Rose, Language Arts Teacher at Connersville Middle School. Michaela Smith, Elementary Teacher at Eastview. Stephanie Smith, Facts Teacher at Connersville High School. And Megan Veneman, Special Ed Teacher at Connersville Middle School. Extracurricular, we have Sandy Aleesh Peck, English Department Chair at Connersville Middle School. Lindsey Brook, Science Department Chair at Connersville Middle School. Maurice Green, Science Department Chair of Connersville High School. John Marvel, Assistant Football Coach at Connersville Middle School. Stephanie Smith, Facts Department Chair at Connersville High School. Sandy Toshlog-Joe, Auditorium and TV Director of Connersville High School. And Amy Wise, 7th and 8th Grade Cheerleading Coach at Connersville Middle School. You also have a T attachment A, which is a recommendation for approval for administrative contracts for the next year or two.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cirqua. I'd like to ask for a motion for the Personnel Report.
I want that motion.
Thank you, Warren. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Andy. Any discussion?
How many more positions do we still have to fill?
I'm working on about eight right now. We've had 23. We have eight more.
Just a question. Mike, are you -- there seems to be a lot of turnover in there. That's not atypical. Are we doing any exit interviews? Are you doing exit interviews at all?
Yeah, we're giving them an opportunity to meet with me or even send me an email to let us know what we can do differently or any concerns or complaints that they have. Haven't had any response or anybody show up yet.
Okay.
Most folks are leaving for family situations or travel. A lot of our teachers who are leaving live in other communities, and I think the travel takes its toll. Or job promotions for a spouse. So that's been a lot of what we receive, so a lot were not unexpected.
Would you say that the principals in those buildings generally know what the reasons are, and that's why they don't choose to do an exit interview or somebody's conveyed their...
I think they've conveyed to them, you know, the reason why and...
So they don't really feel a need to have to do something?
Right.
Okay. Okay. With that being said, no further discussion. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll go on to school board policy. Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Ms. President Board. If you recall, last month, we had our first read of two different policies. This is a second reading, and I'm going to briefly review the policies. The first is Policy 4.26, Publications, Expressive Activity that are school-sponsored. Really, we wanted to try to better define what publications and productions are. We also wanted to be sure that we address that, you know, keeping in mind who the audience is for these publications or productions, that they be suitable for all students. And then it just further defines some of the areas that the sponsor, the faculty advisor working with the principal director, will make sure that the material is appropriate, there is no libel involved. And then the last is, we added a place where if the students or the faculty advisors disagree with the principal or director in their denial of a publication or production, there is an appeal process to me and then beyond me within five days to the board. So that wasn't there, and that was recommended by our attorney to be sure we covered that. So that's a brief summary of 4.26. The other is Policy 3.09 with nepotism. And this just defines a little more with the key piece here is that you cannot directly supervise and evaluate a family member, and it just clarifies that language, cleans up the policy language a little bit. So those are the two pieces, two policies for you. Does anyone have any questions, comments about the two policies and the changes that are proposed?
Okay. Alrighty. I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the School Board Policy 4.26 and 3.09.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Lori. Do I hear a second?
Yes.
Thank you, Mark. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go on to Curriculum Revision and Course Additions. Ms. Corsaro.
Thank you, President Jacobs. Last month, we brought to you the request to revise some curriculum and addition of three courses, course changes at CHS. So tonight, I'm bringing to you for a recommendation to make changes to the following areas of curriculum, K-12 Art, K-12 Physical Education, Business, Family Consumer Science, Engineering and Technology, as well as the course changes for CHS.
Does anyone have any questions? I would like to ask for a motion for the Curriculum Revision and Course Additions.
I want my motion.
Thank you, Andy. May I hear a second? Thank you, Chris. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Alright, we'll go on to the Permission to Secure Auctioneer for the Orange Property, Ms. Kellentallit.
Thank you, Mrs. Jacobs. The orange property seems to be the gift that just keeps on getting around us as we work our way through all of the legal hoops we have to go through. We're now to the point where we're asking the board to allow us to secure the services of a land auctioneer and to establish a minimum bid for the property. Ideally, you should expect to receive 90% of the average of the two appraisals. However, there are conflicting statutes. That's in one statute. There is another statute related to the sale of property that allows you to set a minimum bid. So that's what we're asking you to do in case the property does not bring 90% of the average of the two properties. That 90% number would be $20,925. We are asking you to consider establishing a minimum bid of $10,000. We had discussed previously whether to divide the property into two parcels or sell it as one. We would incur more expense by having to divide the property, so we're just going to hopefully sell it as one property with a land auctioneer. The land auctioneer can advertise, but we also have to do our own advertising per statute. So that's where we are.
Alrighty. Let's hope this is the last thing we have to do. Okay, I would like to ask for a motion for permission to secure the auctioneer for the orange property.
Yeah, Chris, I will make that motion.
Thank you, Chris. A second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Warren. Any discussion?
Will somebody, is somebody really going to buy it this time, we hope?
I've had inquiries. There also is an adjacent landowner who I speak to on a frequent basis. I'm going to be honest, we were ready to go a while ago. Our attorney is very bit slow to respond. That's not Michelle Cooper. There is a specialist who does a lot of work in sale of property, and she's just not been as responsive as Michelle normally is. So I've had frequent calls. I've told people, I'll let them know, but also it's their responsibility to check the newspaper for information related to the sale.
There is, has been interest expressed.
Yeah, but what I can tell them now is, you know, that the average of the two appraisals is $20,925, and the board has set a minimum of $10,000. So that way you really only get serious, kind of serious, if you approve this. So, okay.
Alrighty, I would like a...oh wait, that's the discussion. We already took our motions. Okay, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And back to Ms. Kellentallit for the Request to Purchase a Ford F-250 Truck from Advantage Ford.
Thank you. We are recommending the purchase of a new F-250 truck. We are asking for the utility bed on this vehicle as it will be used by one of the maintenance men. Additionally, we're asking to equip it with an eight-foot snowplow so that it can help push snow in the winter. We will not be trading in or decommissioning our old truck, but instead it's going to be capped just to use for like brush removal or tree removal, you know, when we have limbs down. So we'll continue to use it, but not on a daily basis. We are using the state QPA again, so the pricing is $39,229.44. It will be through Advantage Ford, who holds the state QPA, so we're pleased to use a local vendor as well.
Is this a 2017 model, 2018 model, does it say?
It's a 2018 model.
It is? Okay.
But there is a 12 to 14-week delay because they manufacture the truck, then they send it to NAP to have the utility bed installed. So these are a much longer lead time.
Is the truck under, I'm sure there's under a warranty?
Just the standard like drive train. Yeah, yeah.
Is there any kind of warranty on the snowplow or the utility bed through the manufacturer that it's equipped with?
Not that I know of.
Okay. And are we equipped to service the snowplow? If our maintenance guys, if there was some...
We have, we have snowplows for our vehicles now. It's less expensive for us to buy it equipped with that than to retrofit it after the fact.
Oh, sure, but I'm just saying, in the future, you know, if hydraulic pump goes down, I mean, we can service it ourselves, we wouldn't have to have...is that correct?
They have, so far, yeah.
Retrospection mechanics. Or could there be a warranty?
She probably can. She probably can.
Yeah.
Certainly glad to buy from local vendors whenever we can.
Yeah. Did we have, when we bought the 2010 model, did we have a backup back then that we were, we kept around, and is that normal?
We did, and I... Is that the one high school uses now? High school uses for trash. For trash. I think we just moved trash and brush from the high school over to here, and there's, their little truck was on its last legs that we repurposed and wore market.
We'll see a part there behind the building.
Yeah, okay. Alright, I'd like to ask for a motion to request the purchase of a Ford F-250 truck from Advantage Ford.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mark. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Andy. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll now move on to the NWA Renewal for Grades K through 12. Ms. Corsaro.
Thank you, President Jacobs. Currently, we're using NWA in grades K through 10, and this is a formative assessment that allows us to determine the student's growth and also compare students to their grade level peers and performance. We are going to, again, utilize the Indiana Formative Assessment Grant to help offset the cost of this. So tonight, I'm asking for your approval to renew the contract for NWA K through 10.
I'd like to entertain a motion to renew the NWA.
I'll so move.
Thank you, Ann. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Lori. Any further discussion?
Kim, I loved this test when I was teaching. Has the feedback continued to be so positive from those that are using it?
I think the more that we provide them with professional development and they are able to use the reports to drive instruction, the more comfortable and the more buy-in we get of the assessment. We were using it K-8 for a while, and then we went away from K-8 and moved to K-2. So again, it's kind of taking that professional development and taking it back to those teachers that haven't used it for a long time and helping them understand how to use the reports. Once they use the reports and they see the information that they're gaining from the reports, they've been very positive.
Well, even back in the day, the reports were excellent.
They are.
They really give you a window, a peek into where the kid is, and I found that my students really liked, didn't mind taking it because they could see their growth, and it was something very tangible and something immediate. So this is one of, I don't like standardized tests, but this has to be one of my favorite assessments because you can get gleaned so much out of it, and it's not, it's not a horrible test to take.
Right, right. I agree.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the textbook rental fees for 2018, 2019, Ms. Corsaro.
In your packet, you can see that I have provided you with a memo explaining the fees for elementary as well as CMS and CHS. The elementary fees, because we were able to secure a competitive grant for $100,000, our elementary fees are very comparable to what they were last year. CHS and CMS, obviously, it depends on CHS on what classes they take, but the average cost is going to be what it was last year. And then for WCC, their fees will obviously not be set until July. So textbook fees for this upcoming year are going to be very similar to what we had last year. So I'm asking for your approval for the fees.
Kim, I have a question. So are students that are on free and reduced lunch to get a break in their textbook fees? Is that correct?
Yes.
So do they also get a break if they join band or choir? Or is that not included?
No, it's included.
That is?
If they are...
Textbook and consumable workbooks are partially reimbursed by the state textbook grant. What's not funded from that then rolls on to our debt service the next year. The fee fee.
Yeah.
But, you know...
Not the top...
Yeah. The fees for consumables for science or consumable materials for choir. We ask the free and reduced lunch qualifying parents to pay those. However, they cannot be turned over to collection if they do not pay them. And there is no reimbursement mechanism from the state or through debt service for those consumable materials. I hijacked your statement.
That's okay. No, that's perfect.
So of these fees, like for 7th and 8th grade, I'm just looking at the band and choir money, they would be asked to just pay the 7 or the $21, those families, because the others are covered.
Yeah. Correct. Not all parents, not many parents do.
No.
And that's why some of those programs really struggle because...
They don't get that money.
Our high free and reduced lunch population, and then the parents know that they don't have to pay. And...
Go ahead.
Are they given notices throughout the year or anything?
They're asked to pay them.
Remind their notices or anything?
They're asked.
Okay.
Some of them include it in their newsletter, how, you know, it helps with those programs and making sure that they have the materials that they need. But just because they don't pay, you cannot withhold any right, privilege, or benefit for non-payment of those.
That's why they have fundraisers throughout the year.
We should only have those 30 days a year.
There's always...
So again, for those students that, you know, are unable to pay for their book fees, we can't collect aside from that, what about classroom materials as far as, how does that work in regards to, you know, teachers needing classroom materials? How does that pay us?
Those are paid through the building funds, and typically, at the beginning of the year, administrators will give them a certain amount of money, and then if they need something throughout the year, they just need to come and request it from their building administrator.
The buildings are given an allocation. For some more of those more expensive programs, we do, like at the high school, we include supply money that's specific. Or one example, for the high school choir music, we have a contracted service for their accompanists. So we have in our general fund budget an allocation for those above and beyond type things.
Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the textbook rental fees for 2018, 2019.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Andy. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Lori. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, Fiscal Year End Procedures, Ms. Kellentallit.
Thank you. This is new this year. As you've heard me discuss, the changes that are coming July 1 in our account numbering system require all expenses to be allocated to the building level, except those that cannot be allocated will be done so at the corporation level, and then they'll be allocated as a percentage across the building from the Department of Education. So my count is now up to 2,800 new accounts that we need to add to our system, and that doesn't include any of the new things that will start this hall. So why, part of why I'm asking for this is for us to settle as many claims as possible under the old numbering system by June 30. Then we'll start fresh July 1 with some of these. In addition to that, I'm asking the board to allow me to transfer the appropriations that were established in non-building identified accounts to building identified accounts. It does not increase our budget in any way, shape, or form. It just moves the money from one account to now three or four different accounts. I'll give you an example. Guidance counselor salaries. So those were already split between two classes, or two expenditure accounts. The elementary guidance, we, half of it goes to guidance, half of it goes to at-risk. They were charged to those two accounts. I now have to charge half to guidance for Eastview, half to guidance for Maplewood, half to at-risk for Eastview, half to at-risk for Maplewood, Everton and Frazee, the same thing. So now, you know, I've got six accounts instead of two.
Anybody that shares somebody, they have to have their own account for that particular bill?
Because it has to be building identified.
But we don't have to do this approval for every single account, just all of them?
If you just approve this, then you let me pay bills at the end of the month to clear out a lot of things that'll be hanging there between the two accounting systems, and you're allowing me to move money within the general fund or any other budgets that I need to allocate by building level, but it does not increase the budget.
Is everybody aware of the two funds that we're moving from? The number of funds we have to just the two funds? Everybody knows about that?
Yeah, and that's in January. So we're doing all this now with still general fund, capital projects, bus replacement, but then come January, I have to take all of those and divide them off, and part of them go to the education fund and part of them go to the operation fund. So, but we'll talk more about that when we do the budget for next year.
Whatever you want to do.
That would have been retire.
That is not allowed. That is not allowed.
Okay. I would like to seek a motion for the Fiscal Year End Procedures to be taken care of.
President, I will make that motion.
Thank you, Chris. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ann. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, Request to Purchase New Buses from Bus Replacement Fund and Head Start Fund, Mr. Collins. And I guess Ms. Volk is going to speak as well, possibly.
Katrina's here to answer any other questions, but in the memo, it explains we have appropriation money left to purchase an 84-passenger bus. It's a rear-engine bus, and what this will do is it'll serve dual purposes. One, we have an area where because of the number of kids in that area, the density of the number, we're running two buses, whereas if we had a larger bus, we could, in effect, run this one larger bus that seats more kids. And the other is, many of our elementaries, when they take a field trip to Indianapolis or Cincinnati Zoo, we have to take two of the 66-passenger buses because it's not realistic to put three sixth graders in a seat together. This bus will pretty much handle most any grade level at any of our elementaries, so we will, in effect, save that money too by just taking one bus and paying the cost for that. So this will go nicely with our Spartan Express when we're wanting to transport large groups like our band or football team or choirs, so we will be able to transport more students. So because we have this appropriation we were carrying over, Katrina brought the proposal to me, and it made a lot of sense with the cost savings of $27,000 to $30,000 per year, plus the savings from not needing two buses for field trips. So that's the first. And then the other, in working with Lori Boggs, her Head Start Coordinator, we have some excess funds that would allow us to purchase another Head Start minibus, and since these are federal dollars, we wanted to take advantage of those dollars. And so Katrina was able to get the pricing for that, and it comes in just under $60,000. So we will add that to our fleet as well, which may reduce the need for one bus next year. So we're just trying to take advantage of the funds so we can use those. So those are the two purchases. Normally, we don't do this in June, but we had an opportunity to really use our TransFinder software that we invested in and starting to find ways to be more efficient with our buses and how we offer our services. So those are the two purchases. So those are the two bus purchases for your consideration.
Just to clarify there, when we purchased the bus, talking about eliminating one route. Obviously, that, just to clarify for watching and listening, because we're eliminating a route, we're not eliminating jobs by any means. Well, I understand that, but I'm just saying that out loud.
Right.
We're kind of hurting the drivers.
Exactly. And, you know, our director or our secretary may be out running routes on any given day. We do have some drivers that are being trained and getting their yellow card. But this will definitely help alleviate that shortage of drivers that we're experiencing. But I talked to other superintendents, seems to be a trend throughout the state. So this will help us so no one is losing a job. It will just help us in not having to try to find another driver or our director out driving a route every day.
Right. We're trying to better utilize our resources that we have, including our drivers. And the trend, we're talking to other directors, many are moving towards the larger capacity buses to make their routes run more efficiently, one, but to address a drivers shortage issue, two. So we definitely aren't eliminating jobs. We're trying to patch together where we've lost drivers throughout the year.
That was a good question. I appreciate you asking it because that's important to point out. Thank you.
Clarify, so I can hear that or see that and think, oh, no, this is gonna, you know, medicine by law, it's not the case. We're trying to make the best use of taxpayer dollars, you know, obviously, be as efficient as we possibly can.
And the savings will pay for the cost of this bus in just a few years.
Oh, yeah.
And that's always a benefit too, when we can be more cost effective.
Will this help the situation, what you have a lot of times on field trips, where we have to be back so early in the day, that won't help that part?
No, unfortunately, because of the way our schedules are structured, almost 100% of our drivers are running both elementary and middle school, high school routes. We do have a couple of drivers who aren't running elementary routes that might change a little bit next year. So we might only have one or two in that situation. We try to put those drivers on those trips where we can for the middle school and the high school, but sometimes it just doesn't work out.
I guess I was thinking that this would be like another bus for us to use, but in essence, it's just replacing one that we're retiring. We're just getting a bigger bus.
Correct.
Correct.
And it will serve more purposes for us for extracurricular use. And our hope, we're looking at other ideas too, on how we can transport students under the state guidelines. One issue that's been really challenging that a lot of people don't understand is with our homeless children, children who have been placed in foster care, if they're going, if they're now living in Richmond or Franklin County, we still provide that bus service. So at one point, we were running three different routes in three different directions, which that is why you approved that pay differential for drivers who didn't have to have their yellow card to be able to drive those. So we're trying to find some creative ways. And Janie's made us aware of some other changes we're working on. We hope to bring to you here in the next month or so with some ideas on how we can support those children too, because it's taxing our department a lot.
Janie, a bigger bus, longer, wider, any weight issues or, you know, I think of some of these, our county roads around here with their decorative check holes and stuff. And thinking of a bigger, you know, around some Daryl Curves, is that an issue at all, a bigger bus?
No, we have test driven multiple units, one being one of those 84 passenger rear engine buses. We actually took it on the route that it would be on the proposed route for it. And we had zero maneuverability issues with it, which is why the recommendation came for that over some other options that we had.
And with the rear engine bus, I've learned a lot about buses. Katrina's educated me a lot, but the rear engine buses don't have as wide of a swing with the rear of the bus. So that helps us maneuver around tighter. There's about, what, a five foot difference in swing of a front engine bus versus, is that really?
Somewhere in there. And we actually did take it downtown to all of our elementary schools to make sure it would fit in the parking situations there. And moving forward, obviously, the routes that we're looking at, maybe renegotiating, we'll obviously have that bus on that route to make sure it can negotiate its way through it. But 100% okay on the route that we're looking at for this next year.
Great.
Thank you for all that information. Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to request to purchase new buses for bus from bus replacement fund and the head start funds.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mark. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ann. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, the telephone system replacement and fiber upgrades for the athletic facilities, Ms. Kellum-Tallett.
I'll be brief, but if you need some devilish details, I'm thankful Mr. Miller is here today. I think we have some principals in the audience too, who would be happy to share their experiences with our telephone system. We have known for a few years now that its life was coming to a rapid end and that we would need to be addressing that. It is a huge investment. So when we got to the end of the year last year, and we had not spent all of the capital equipment money that we had allocated in the rainy day fund, I did encumber some of that to carry forward to this year to assist us with that purchase. Mr. Miller has now vetted the vendors who were interested in our project and attached. You will see his recommendation for that project. The total project cost is $303,105.71. Now, there are some components that will be paid for not through the rainy day. For example, the career center will be responsible for their own. The services to the athletic complexes will be the responsibility of athletics or athletic CPF. And Magic Moments will cover their own. And maintenance transportation will use transportation funds to make that purchase. So the $300,000 we had allocated in rainy day is sufficient to cover the cost of the telephone system upgrades. The expected timeline is that it will be wrapped up by the end of October at all locations. You know, we really started this earlier in the year, but from what Terry shared, the vendors were slow to respond to him. Our hope was to have it installed over the summer. It's not going to be ideal doing it when school's in session. But to wait another year until school's out isn't in the best interest of the school corporation.
I know you listed Frontiers providing the service. Are they also doing the install for all locations?
Yeah, correct.
Yes, they are. We are also going to be utilizing some of our student intern co-ops to do various home placements throughout the buildings rather than have their engineers do it. So we'll have our freedom.
We will experience a monthly decline and are billed from granted by going through Frontier, changing the type of system that we're utilizing. So there will be some cost savings on a monthly basis going forward.
We're talking about safety. You know, if we're going to have some information about some things we're doing to address the safety needs of our building, this is a very important piece of that. Our phone system is so antiquated that it doesn't meet our needs with, in the event we do have an emergency that we hope we never have, that we need to be able to have a system in place to handle the calls and a lot of the emergency response pieces we need, so.
The current system's been in place for at least 20 years, probably, close to that.
Do you just not have enough lines coming into the buildings or what is it that you drop calls? What are the problems?
Well, this recently, we lost all our voice mounts. It's just a very, very old system, so we had to replace it temporarily so that parents could call me and ask. Ours is, I think, the oldest.
We drop calls. Calls aren't coming through and ringing in. I mean, there are numerous issues throughout the system that we've been battling. The Band-Aids are.
Well, we didn't have phones in rooms till 93.
We can't even replace the phones we have. We can't purchase them eventually.
We tried to locate the provision.
Tried to.
They weren't rotary. They were just phones. We didn't have phones in our rooms for a long time.
It's not a party lining.
No, no. Terry, do you think Frontier gave you the best deal as far as the package was concerned?
We took advantage of our participation with quantity purchase agreements that are established with our membership through its renamed Sourcewell. I think, yeah, they're now called Sourcewell. They used to be National Joint Powers Alliance. Our membership there allows us to take advantage of quantity purchase agreements. And in addition to the savings that that provided us, there's a new promotion that came out that recently, that's going to save us another $16,000. And that is refunded in this as well, so.
Do we have any guarantees with Frontier that once we go with them, that they're not going to raise our bill every two years and reduce the service capabilities?
The monthly recurring charge as spec is under a three-year term agreement, so it's fixed for three years.
Because they do that to the individual consumers badly. So just didn't want us to get into that same kind of situation.
The phones that we were purchasing through Frontier, they're not proprietary to them. For example, we were to, at the end of our three-year contract, weren't able to negotiate a better deal from another vendor. We would be able to switch over and not have to repurchase all the phones. Is that correct?
That's correct. These are, it's a Mitel system. Mitel's a $1 billion telecommunications manufacturer. And these are Mitel based in sets and systems.
Awesome. Thank you.
Janie, I have a question. You said that this bottom figure, the grand total of $303,000 is coming from Rainy Day. But you also said that some of these individuals, you know, Magic Moments.
We encumbered $300,000 to cover the cost. However, individual sites will be, like Magic Moments is their own entity, if you will. Their records are in ours, but they would be responsible for their own share of the cost. The career center, while we're the LEA for it, they would be responsible for their share of the cost. Athletics, where these are, they're not like in our building, not where PE uses it. It is the athletic facilities. It's to the concession stand. It's to the football press box. So athletics needs to cover the cost of that, so we'll use their CPF. So we will not be using the whole $300,000. When we, if you approve this, when we issue the purchase order to Frontier, those will be accounted for in those individual budgets. And then the stuff for the corporation will be taken from that $300,000. So we will have money left. We're not spending that whole allocation.
Okay, that's my, just wanted to be sure.
I think with our safety concerns, this is a real, a real plus. You don't have to go very far in the news to check out miscommunication costing lives in this country. So hopefully, this will take care of some of those concerns.
When did they anticipate it would be done, if they do it at the beginning, you know, whenever they get to it during the school year?
Terry indicated me, all sites would be wrapped up by the end of October.
Oh, okay, great.
So we're going to hold onto that. Needs to be a high priority.
Okay. Alrighty. I would like to recommend a motion for the telephone system replacement fiber upgrades for, well, it says for athletic facilities. This is for, that is what the agenda says.
Fiber upgrades for the athletic.
Telephone system replacement for extension wire and fiber upgrades for athletic facilities.
Alrighty. That. Thank you, Andy. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Lori. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, move on to the request to transfer funds from transportation fund to Rainy Day and general fund to Rainy Day. Ms. Kellum-Tallett, sorry.
Do we want to bundle all of these or you want me to do this?
Let's go ahead and do this.
Okay. In reviewing the transportation and general fund cash balances and the annual budgets, and with the change in the funds coming to an education and operation fund, at this time, I'm making a recommendation that we move $700,000 from the transportation fund and $800,000 from the general fund to the rainy day fund. This will help restore the rainy day fund balance to its June 30, 2016 balance of approximately $5.3 million. You know, we're going to talk about security issues here in a few minutes. We're going to talk about enclosing the high school campus. These funds could help with some of that. They can help with our circuit breaker of $1.2 million that we experience annually. We have a few more unfunded future bridge payments to retirees that we take out of the rainy day fund. We've used capital projects funds during 2016 and 2017. We made over a million dollars in capital improvements using rainy day funds. So this will help put some money back in there. But in a few minutes, we're going to talk about spending some money out of the rainy day fund also.
It's going in one pocket and?
Well, maybe, if it's approved. But ideally, if we want to move money to the rainy day fund, it's better to do it before I start building the new budgets for the education and operation fund. So because what you do is you work off of your cash balance at June 30 expenditures for the remainder of the year, then those balances will be transferred into those new funds. You have a packet at your place this evening. The first item in there is I had a request to do a historical of the rainy day fund. I did not go back to the beginning. I went back to when I arrived, July 1, 2010. At that point in time, we had a little over $4.6 million. In June of 2011, we put $622,611.14 in there. You're going, why is such an odd amount? We refinanced our middle school bonds at that point in time. And the board elected to put all of the savings from the refinancing into the rainy day fund. So it grew then to $5.28 million. The transportation fund made a transfer in December of 2011 of a half a million dollars. The balance then remained at $5,782,000 until June 30 of 2013. We then started using it for capital improvements and emergency capital expenditures. In 2013, we did another transfer from transportation. We then ran out of pension bond money to cover the bridge and severance payments to our retirees. So we started budgeting for and including those in the rainy day. So in between December of 13 and June of 14, we paid a quarter of a million dollars in bridge and severance payments out of there. In November of 14, we added another half a million dollars from transportation fund. In the first half of 15, we again did bridge and severance payments. At that time, we were deploying lots of technology. We did not have capacity in our capital projects fund to add technology staff. So the board at that time approved taking technology staff additions out of the rainy day fund. So those salaries and fringe benefits for that person were taken out of that rainy day fund. We also did some minor building improvements. Again, in 2016, we did technology staffing and benefits. We did the Spartan Bowl floor and the tennis courts to the tune of over $300,000. We did Everton's roof that year for $242,700. We did some building, other building improvements, boilers, chillers, $423,000. So at December 31, 2015, our rainy day fund was at $4,863,000. In January of 16, we added half a million dollars. And we had bridge and severance payments of $42,000. We had bridge and severance payments of $42,500. We did some land improvements, some additional athletics, some building improvements, but the balance at June 30th, 30th of 2016, I'm sorry, that's a typo, was $5.3 million. Later that year, we did athletic improvements of $129,000 and some land improvements of The end of the year in 2016, we were just slightly over $5 million in our Rainy Day Fund. Again, that was still above the $4.6 million in July of 2010. We then did bridge and severance payments of about a quarter million dollars, some technology upgrades, some more athletic improvements, building improvements, and emergency capital, bringing our June 30 of 2017 balance to $4.6 million. In the last half of 2017, we did $69,000 worth of technology upgrades. We did building improvements of $432,000. We had emergency capital of $85,000. We had to replace a?
Chiller's, wasn't it?
At Everton. That was a year ahead of when we had it built in to the Capital Projects Plan, so that's why that emergency that year was so large. In December, our Rainy Day balance was just over $4 million. Since that time, we have done bridge and severance payments, some technology upgrades, a few building improvements, making our current balance in the Rainy Day Fund just under $3.8 million. A footnote I included in here, in the 2017 budgeting process, I don't know if you recall, but the DLJF made us start building and what the circuit breaker impact was going to be into each of the funds, so basically, we had to cut out those expenditures. Previously, they had let us build that budget and then just know that you couldn't spend more than you collected or you had cash balance for, but by making us account for that and cut those expenditures out at the time of budgeting, we moved all of the building improvements to the Rainy Day Fund for those cuts for that one year. So, that's why you'll see the building improvements so high at $433,000 in 2017, in the last half of the year, plus another $53,000 in the first part of the year. So, I'm not sure if that fits the bill of the requests for an analysis of where we are on the Rainy Day Fund, but.
Quick question. How much, how much more financial obligation do we have for the bridge and severance for the facility?
It goes down every year, when's it roll out? 2020, 2021, the payment per year, and then it could be up to five years after that, but every year, the contracted declines. People are working longer. We know I'm nearly as many people going on, really, and the amount declines every year, like I said, so.
Once the funds change, there's still, is a possibility that money could be moved to Rainy Day from these other funds, always possible?
Correct. One of the interesting things in this legislation, right now, you can't move money out of Rainy Day. You have to build a budget that you spend all the money in Rainy Day. With the new legislation, that, with the new funds, in Rainy Day, we could spend out of Rainy Day. We could move money from the Rainy Day to the Operating Fund, or we could move money to the Rainy, or to the Education Fund. So, that frees up some of the handcuffs associated with the Rainy Day Fund. We'll still build a budget for it, that, to have some capacity, but let's say we needed more money in the Operations Fund, circuit breaker hit us harder or whatever, and I didn't have appropriation in Rainy Day to cover it, we wouldn't have to go through the process of an additional. I could bring to the board for their consideration a resolution offering a transfer of $500,000 from Rainy Day over to the Operating Fund, to help with that, so.
So, it just basically, the new system allows you to be much more flexible?
With the Rainy Day Fund.
With the Rainy Day Fund, not with the rest of it, apparently?
There are differing opinions on whether this is a good thing or not. I'm preferring to look at it as a good thing. Right now, as you notice on here, just being very transparent, we have had more money in Transportation than we've really needed. We've moved it to Rainy Day. That money will now be able to help support some of the capital projects that we have not been able to, to fund for, without having to go through moving it to Rainy Day, to spend it out of Rainy Day. Those will all blend together. We will still make sure that Transportation gets what it needs to operate. We will not be extending buses beyond their useful life. We will still use that plan to define what the buses, you know, what the bus plan and how much goes towards Transportation, so.
Okay. I would like to entertain a motion to request the transfer of funds from Transportation Fund to Rainy Day and General Fund to Rainy Day. Thank you, Chris. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Lauren. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Now, Ms. Kellentall, we want to accommodate school loan for campus security initiative.
Thank you.
You want to talk about this first, you want to talk about field house?
I think we're going to do the last three all together, if that's okay with the board, because they really do tie in with each other. One of the things that I believe a lot, and we've heard a lot over the years, is the campus at CHS and the open. It was a great concept in the 1960s and '70s. It's not so great now with our safety concerns and just the openness of where we may have a thousand kids out in that courtyard at any given time. So, we began talking about ways we could enclose that courtyard. So, when we looked at the CHS campus, we brought in a couple of different architects who came over, looked at what we had, and gave us some ideas of what we could do if we wanted to dream big. One of the things that I think we've, you know, these buildings are all getting pretty old, and when you look at the opportunities for other kids with different athletic band, just, you know, our community, the opportunities for space, we're lacking that. And something, I talked with architects, and we have architects from Fannie and Howie here, they've been very responsive to our request to look at ways we could make this a possibility and enclose that courtyard, possibly flip the office area and then add a fieldhouse that has three basketball courts and a track and a lot of different facilities with it, a new weight room. Our weight room is severely undersized, and just having room for our programs. I've talked with the basketball coaches. They would love to not have their kids finish practice till eight or nine o'clock at night. So, those were the ideas that we tossed out to Fannie and Howie. Cindy, would you put up one of the drawings? I want you to see what we're talking about. We also have some pictures here of our latest, if you will pass one of those down.
You have a packet.
The architect brought bigger ones, if you want to see bigger ones.
Do people want to see bigger ones?
Yeah, sure.
You have a great eye, doctor.
I'm fine with the small version.
I do. So, if you could, if you want to look at the screen up here, our idea is looking at the back end of the courtyard, and we have two different designs that they've tossed out, and one, we'll show you the other one in a minute, but we're trying to look at ways we can move the office and the entrance to a secure place, because right now, if someone wants to come in and meet with Mr. Judd, they just walk right on into our courtyard and wander around if they're not familiar with the facility until they find someone who can say, oh, the office is over here. It's, it puts us at a big risk with who can come in, I mean, anyone can drive into our courtyard with a vehicle if they wanted to. And so, this would, in effect, if you look at the top left picture, that would be what a proposed idea of what a new entrance to Connersville High School would look like, and then we would have our attendance secretary and our receptionist there, and then we would have office expansion there as well, and then everyone would funnel into the building through the purple area in the, in the large picture, or else there would be a passage through to the courtyard for our students or guests too, once they cleared the office. So, this takes care of that piece. If you look at the bottom left corner, we had originally talked about putting office space there with our attendance secretary and our receptionist, and possibly even Brett Duncan's office, because a lot of people will come to the athletic office. It's just not practical, because we still have the same issue where we bring them in and then they just get released out into our courtyard again. So, this idea came from Fannie and Howie, where we put a nice gate with access for snowplows, things like that, a nice brick. It wouldn't, it would not be just a barbed wire fence. It would be a nice brick, black wrought iron gate, double gate to allow vehicles into the courtyard. We could use it for buses in the morning, afternoon. Mr. Judd will work on a lot of those ideas, a lot of flexibility.
Where does the gate go, the BSC?
It would be up between the cafeteria, the very, in the bottom left corner, you can see a red line there, so it would, in effect, close off what is now the main entrance into the courtyard.
Facing your house, Mr. Taylor.
So, it'd be facing your house.
Top right.
Bottom left.
Well, the photo is down the bottom left he's referencing, but I know what you're talking about, when it's up there.
Correct.
It's where you currently come in and come down the ramp.
Yeah.
Yeah, then there would be a gate there.
That would be a nice gate with access that could be used for emergencies or for student entrance exit, or if we had programs, so it would be a useful area to enter, but we would keep it locked down during the day when students are present. So, this was an idea that came from that. It accomplishes a lot of our needs. We have summer school PE going on, and if it's rainy, there are three classes of kids trying to use that gym, which, that's about, what, 90 kids, Mr. Judd? We do need more space. And then I look at the benefits of this from our youth basketball program, hosting tournaments. We would have four gyms available on the campus, volleyball tournaments, our dirt road league that Carrie Brown has really got moving and growing. It would be multipurpose, and I would also envision this being used by our community. It will have a track that goes around the perimeter of the courts that folks would have set times when they could come in and use this after hours. So, I think it has a lot of use outside of just our Connersville High School students. We would also look at a strength and cardio area to the far right of the purple, which would double the size of our weight room now, which we can't even get our football team in there to lift weights all at one time, I don't believe, because it's just a very limited space, and we would have some cardio space there with ellipticals, things like that as well. So, it would be a multipurpose facility.
Could staff use that off hour or whatever?
I think it, yes, definitely. We would also have locker rooms there. We'd have a concession stand when we do have sporting events. Talked to Michael Thompson, he went on a tour of the Greensburg Field House, and, you know, he said that you could host some of your freshman basketball games there, so we would have opportunities for concessions as a moneymaker too, when we hosted travel league tournaments through the different basketball leagues, volleyball leagues, and then it would be used for all sports. Two of the courts would be lined with tennis lines, and we would have nets that we could put up for kids to get practice indoors. We have no tennis facility nearby. Be used for baseball, we would have batting cages in there, softball, track and field. It covers every sport, band, color guard. It truly covers every sport and every group in, in our high school. And so, Cindy, you want to put the other picture? This was another option. Some people can't get past the slant of the building. I sort of like it, because it opens up our office space more. If you look at the green, that would be the new office area, and it makes it a little wider, more noticeable, but then it puts everything on a slant, so people can't get past that, and I don't know if I can yet. But these are two different designs. These are just designs. Yeah.
About the cost difference in those two arrangements, Scott?
And our architects are here, they're giving us numbers that are based on today. Our goal, we want to keep the total project below $5 million.
We have to.
We have to.
So, the entrance, the entrance for anybody, any student into the school would be right where the Spartan head is, kind of in that corner there, and that's pretty much it?
Unless we use the bus drop off with the resource officer or our principals at the very front entrance at the start of the day.
I think in the morning, you're going to have to open that up for the buses, have a resource officer there.
Student to drive.
That from the parking lot on the other side, and they would have to walk all the way through and go into the Spartan.
Correct.
Oh, yeah.
Does that design incorporate the weight room and the football field?
This design, we, to get the bigger office space, it would be in the tan that says "Future." We're not for sure. It just depends on material costs. This could come in under what they're estimating, but right now, that would be a separate project that we would have to work through whether we wanted to put a temporary type of fencing up if we can't afford to do it all. They're being realistic. They don't know until, is that, do you think you want to speak to that, Bill?
Yeah, so, so we're very, very respectful of that $5 million maximum project budget. At this point, we're dealing with very conceptual drawings. Of course, many of you, I think, toured Greensburg. We were able to take, that's one of our projects, we were able to take that project inflated forward using information from local contractors, so we feel very confident at this point that what we're showing you is attainable, but obviously, there would be much more detailed design, and at that point in time, we would know more of the specifics on exact square footage and features, but generally, overall, what you're seeing is attainable within your budget.
So, that first assignment was up there, would be also attainable?
Yes.
I can't see, what's the?
No, she was going to switch him back, but.
Oh, I was going to say the tan or peach.
That's for a future, that's where our weight room would be if we decided to prioritize the office and we did not have enough to do it all at one time. We didn't, that, that's a tip, they're just being realistic. We don't know what the actual cost will be until they actually get quotes and talk to construction.
This, this design also has those four lanes, and I remember we talked about whether that cut into the lane surfaces.
I don't want to speak for anybody, but I thought when I toured with many of you at Greensburg, and we looked at the single lane, but there seemed to be adequate room between the exterior wall and the basketball courts, that that felt comfortable, and so each one of these has sort of been refined, and so the previous one that we looked at showed that version that's more like Greensburg, and that could be done here as well on this design.
I have a question about parking, because where this new entrance is going to be, is going to be over by what is now, in essence, the teacher parking lot, correct?
Waterloo parking.
The Waterloo parking lot, okay. All right, now, for student access, is, are those doors by the swimming pool going to be not used and not be allowed?
Auditorium one?
Yeah, auditorium. Those by the, the pool and auditorium, are those not going to be accessible, because you're going to have kids walking through fields to get into the building?
Like, you would just have to come up the tracks?
The circles.
The circles still there, they come up the back way anyway.
They'll just come up the circle.
They'll just come up the circle, okay.
And do kids do that now? Do they come that way into the courtyard?
Most of them do, I think.
Okay, then they'll go through, so that is for them.
Mr. Judd, would that be?
The hall doors probably aren't open now.
They're not open now.
They're not open now, and kids have to walk all the way to the.
Okay. All right, takes care of that.
Okay.
I know my daughter does, so she walks around, so, yeah, so that's, those are things that Mr. Judd and his staff will have to work through, because before we, if the board would approve something like this, we're going to bring our coaches, our high school staff, you know, we want great feedback from everyone to make sure we meet the needs of our kids and get the best bang for our buck, as Mark said when we toured the Greensburg facility. I think this will really change the lives of kids in our community. I was talking to somebody who's a transplant here, and they said, we need a YMCA here, and we don't have anything, and I don't see that ever happening. We're going to take care of the youth of our, this will outlive all of us and be here for generations, and it's, it's a visionary thing, and I think the safety piece is number one priority, closing that courtyard down is first priority, but if we can do that and find space for our kids and for our programs, and, you know, I talked to our color guard sponsor, they had never been able to practice on a full-sized court before their first competition, because our gyms are, full-sized gyms are needed by, you know, basketball season, and so when they went to their first competition, they've been practicing at, what, Frazee or make of wood?
Frazee.
Frazee, and they didn't have the, they weren't aware of the size, so it cost them some points, so guard will be able to use this. Every, every program will, Levi can bring the band kids in to practice formations and marching and. Levi can bring the band kids in to practice formations and marching.
I'd like to think...
Truly multipurpose.
I'd like to think of a portion of this would help in not only recruiting young teachers, but keeping them here as long as we can open it for personal use. Now, I've kind of mentioned to you before, if a young individual in the community wants to go play some basketball or do something, there's no place to go. Not really. I mean, you know, opening that up and, you know, doing something, it's another amenity that, you know, Fayette County or Conroe could have.
We will have to be conscious of where we're going to pay for someone to be there.
Oh, absolutely. I understand that.
And I just want, you know, want to point out that some issues...
Yeah, I don't want to make...
And then we'll post the signs like they had at Greensburg that are in some of our gyms now, that it's sort of use at your own risk also. Because we live in a super happy society.
Oh, very...
I have a question. After you received, or we received input from all the staff, and anybody else that would be involved in the use of this, can the board have the opportunity to meet with the superintendent and with an architect and kind of help finalize the plans?
Yeah, I think that you would definitely... Yeah.
And after that's all said and done, and the architects have the opportunity to do what they're going to do, I would like for the board to, at that time, also have the opportunity to review those plans.
Most definitely. And that's what we're really... The three pieces tonight are looking at this and showing you the vision of what we're trying to do. We took, I think, 10 coaches to Greensburg last Friday, and that was an excited group of folks just dreaming about what they could do with just those programs. The other is, we did a 5-year common school loan. And the State Board of Education, it is on the slate to be reviewed. If we do receive that, then that would fund $3.5 million of this. And then we have timelines, and if I don't say it right, Janie will correct me, but we have... 50% of the funds are to be expended in the first year, and the 100% within two years. So, we start operating under a timeline if we can get this low-cost loan from the state. And so, then, that and the safety piece. We're moving pretty fast on this. Janie's going to share some other numbers with the impact on taxpayers. Most taxpayers will not be impacted by this due to the property tax caps. A very small portion of people even will have any impact at all. And she can talk more about that if you want to hear that information. And then the other is permission to go and to sign an agreement to begin work with Fanning and Howie, so they can start working on those plans with us that we can bring back to the board.
And this is, I mean, aside from approval, to start moving forward is also hinged on the news we hear tomorrow.
Right. If that loan doesn't go through, we're going to have to push this down.
Our loan is being recommended by the Department of Education. Something's going to have to implode for it to not be approved tomorrow.
Well, we're in very good finance... Our school corporation's in very good financial shape by comparison to many, many, many. So, we're at good risk in that respect.
And, you know, this is tied to safety as the top priority. Even though we're looking at expanding space, safety is the first piece with this.
That courtyard has been my greatest fear for 35, 6, 7, 8 years. I don't think we can do a whole lot about some of those singular incidents that, like Scott said, I think eight times a day, we have probably 600 or 700 kids in the courtyard. Every passing period, before school, after school.
Well, I would agree. I think that definitely a safety concern. If you look at all the... As far as the best of my knowledge, the tragic school shootings that have happened over the years, they've all been done from inside. You know, and this doesn't give us 100%, but it certainly accomplishes quite a bit. You know, if you can have just one main entrance, I mean, I think that's going to, you know, do a lot for safety. Speaks a lot for safety for our kids and staff and everybody associated itself. I mean, I think you're trying to maximize, you know, taxpayer dollars and make the most use of it while still, you know, maintaining functionality or increasing functionality of what we have.
Will all the other exterior doors be secured?
Yes.
They are now.
They are now. Just like they are now. Okay, so...
They open during passing periods.
For the students or for a visitor or somebody like that would be...
Inside the courtyard or through the office and that.
No, he's saying now. You're saying with this, the only entrance would be that one front of the dart head.
Right.
Unless we have the buses at the normal site.
Right.
Right, but for a guest or a...
But we'd have somebody there just...
And we were going to rely on Randy and his team to figure out what's the best way to move kids in and out. That's their expertise. I'm not going to claim to have that. So, they're going to be crucial in getting all the logistics solved. And it also gets us a step closer. We don't know what may come down the road with school safety and state and federal mandates. Right now, if we had to move to metal detectors or if the federal government mandated, you know how hard it would be to try to manage that? And so, our first key is getting that main entrance where we funnel people into it. That's the first priority here, and this is going to accomplish that. So...
So, what about evacuation of buildings? Would they... I mean, if a fire broke out or children got in there?
You'll still have all of your exterior doors at all of the buildings as they are. The Field House will have two on the south end, two sets of double doors. You'll still have the one in the band and choir hallway right next to it. I mean, the kids would still go out there.
So, the staff and students would be able to evacuate that building? I mean, if there was a shooter at location X over here at location Z, students would still be able to get out and avoid...
You can go out anytime. You just can't come in anytime.
And the schools have primary and secondary exit points already in their plan, so there should always be at least two points of exit for an emergency.
I know this isn't important in this discussion. It would come down quite... We do details. But I think I asked if there would be a way to go from the Field House over there to the music band auditorium. You know, so that basically, except that you'd have a connection that went all the way around. No, it wouldn't go fully around, because you have the gate in the front, but...
Well, that's why I want the board to have the opportunity to do that.
Right. I just wondered if that was... I think I'd asked you that or asked somebody when we, early on, were looking at this. I just thought, it makes sense. Not for student... Not really necessarily for student use, but was it when we were at, whatever, the awards night, it was pouring rain, and they took kids out?
Yes.
So, they didn't have to go in the courtyard, and they went... They must have gone through some other doors.
They came through... They were in the cafeteria, and they came through, up through orange.
So, there's the doorways, but that isn't typically used by students during the day to turn around?
Right, no.
So, it wouldn't be... I'm not talking about an entrance that would be utilized for everybody, but just if needed.
I think the difficulty is going to be you have $5 million to work with. And different people are going to want different things. And what's the best use of that money? If you go... It's not a number that we set. It is in that that's the local amount you can spend on a project without having to go through petition remonstrance or a referendum. So, in order to keep this moving, it used to be $2 million. I'm thankful it's $5 today, you know? It's... Until January 1, it was $2 million. That's why we borrowed $2 million last year for various projects. It's not about the borrowing amount. We're only borrowing 3.5. It is about the amount of the project. That's why we talk about there may have to be future projects with the office space. Or the... Really, the gate in the front could be started as soon as we can start it. That's a small amount, and then that does control some of the flow of traffic starting.
This is why we have the architects.
Correct. But, you know, it's... There have been so many things already, which you guys don't know. You know, thrown about, "I want this, I want this." Yes. But everything comes with a price tag, and what's going to be the best use of the $5 million? Or are we going to...
That's right.
And part of the... I've been listening to the mindset. Fire is one thing, but a shooter inside a school, one of the problems with Sandy Hook, and I think I saw in the budget, they made those locks. You want your students to stay in classrooms. What he did with Sandy Hook, he just went around different class and was able to get in. But the locks that they make now for schools, he's not, you know... You're not going to be able to, from the outside, bar your way in. Students are going to be pretty much safe inside that classroom. You don't want them running. You want them, you know, the evacuation. I hear evacuation, but you want them to stay pretty much where they're at, you know, in their classroom. And with those locks that I see... I've seen with the marshal service that they put on schoolroom doors, those things are super... And they're basically inexpensive, so that's just mine. Two cents in something like this, so...
And that's something with safety. We're going to briefly go over some things we're doing at the end of this. But, you know, the safety piece is one that we continually talk about. And this is the first big piece of that puzzle on the high school campus. Then to look at other options on how we can further secure and protect our kids and staff. I mean, it's a daunting task that schools are facing all over our country.
This is such a win-win, though. We need the space desperately. Look at anybody that tries to schedule any practice or anything, and particularly those people that want to have offseason workouts, like the soccer team or the tennis team, there simply is no adequate facility for that that's easily accessible. And to have them going into the elementary schools and using those gyms after school hours is problematic for a multitude of reasons. So, this really solves a lot of our problems. And if we could get something close to the Greensburg facility, which was great. That was a super trip to see that. Just to imagine that at our facility, and being able to have that space to use was just... Was very, very good. Usable space, no frills. It was what it needed to be, and...
And it's held up so well.
It has. It didn't look... What's it, 18-years-old? Yeah, it didn't... It didn't look it. And clearly, they maintained it well, but also the materials were such that they... They were maintainable.
Yes.
The only thing was the air conditioning that we would put that in, right? Okay.
Yes.
So, this is a twofold piece.
Wake up, dresser.
I did invite Bill and Mark here if you had any questions about the process with them. We have two action items here. The first is, if we find out the news that we did receive the common school loan tomorrow, that you give us permission to go ahead and start the paperwork and get that signed and approved. We are under a timeline with that. And the other is permission to secure the services of Fanning and Howie as our architects, so they can begin that work and start getting that input from all of our stakeholders. And hopefully, I'm... Bill, you may share, what's the timeline typically on having some plans that might be ready for the board to review? I mean, what's a realistic...
We'll move very quickly. What I suggested was, is we're putting together a leadership team. You're a great from the high school. We'll go through and confirm we've covered all of those items. And then we'll immediately come back to the board and give you an update and show you where we're at before we're done, so that you have an opportunity to provide input, make adjustments. And we'll do that at least two times before we get to a point where we would request going out for bids. So, you'll definitely have plenty of opportunities to guide that project and make sure that it's exactly what you want.
So, in this case, you're obviously the architect for the project, but you're also going to play the role of general contractor and solicit bids?
No. So, our role is architect, engineer, so we're designing the building. And then we would then facilitate for you procurement of bids. We would recommend for a project of this type, much like we did at Greensburg, that we would probably look for a single general contractor, or possibly what we call multiple prime, where we would have a general mechanical, electrical. We're going to survey your local contracting resources and make sure that we get the most involvement of local...
Architect.
Local earlier. Definitely want to do that. Gather the regional expertise, the contractors, and get their interest in this.
What kind of timeline... And I'm going to assume that we're going to get this loan tomorrow. What kind of timeline are we looking at to get this project from groundbreaking to completion?
Well, we've talked with Mr. Collins about late fall of next year. We think that's payable. So, it's not a terribly long process. Now, we all know we live in Indiana. Can't have a bad winter, so that can upset the apple cart sometimes. If you continue to work through really bad winter weather, there's a premium attached to that. So, if we were to run into a particularly bad winter, we'll make the decision at that point whether there's interest in paying that premium or delaying things by a month or so would be the worst case.
How much is this going to impact with this construction going on? How much is it going to impact the everyday lives of the students at CHS?
So, I would like to think that the new security gate... And by the way, the one that we're talking about when Northside students come in, we envisioned the double gate more larger to the NSRO or whoever could stand there and greet students as they're coming in off the bus. Otherwise, it'd be closed. Now, that would have panic device hardware on it. It still needs to be an exit, so in the case of an emergency, those could be pushed forward, just like panic doors, and they could exit out of the courtyard that way. That possibly could be in place before the start of school year or very close to it. So, as Mr. Collins mentioned, that could proceed immediately. The bigger piece, the Student Activities Center, obviously, as that's under construction, we're going to need to coordinate it very off. We're going to have very specific criteria by the contractors as to how they access that. And we're going to have to make sure we maintain adequate exiting for students, staff, and building occupants. We've not worked through that detail yet, but this is not an unusual building project in the sense when we had, we always had those types of logistics. And those are well spelled out, so that when the contractors are bidding the project, they know how they could access the site, what they can do and what they can't do to maintain safety.
On some level, if you have that north gate put up... This is all proof. You have the north gate put in, and then you are beginning the construction, so you've got the area cordoned off. We already have succeeded in closing off that courtyard. Although I don't know cordoned off what that means. It could be, you know, tape, but I wasn't...
No, it would be more than that.
Right. But then, even though you're waiting that period of time for the structure to be done, you've succeeded in accomplishing that one goal.
Yeah, you have to enclose the courtyard at that point.
Having been through a two-and-a-half-year renovation in a building, this is... To get this kind of timeline... Of course, this is basically construction as opposed to renovation, but that's fabulous that you could get that done. And I don't foresee a lot of interruption of the regular school process at all.
The flow of kids and staff and stuff.
Right. And that parking lot is adjacent. We'll have some... We'll have some mispositions we'll have to work through with your staff to make sure that we keep things as normal as possible. And by all means, make sure that we ensure the safety of students and staff so that they're not interacting with construction activities.
So there's two pieces here, further discussion.
Well, I think we need to maybe just have Janie go over just kind of briefly or quickly. Not saying they're verbose, but.
I like to talk about school finance. Do love that.
The numbers, the debt, the debt service schedule, that's good.
The recommendation is for a common school loan at 3.5 million, which you are well aware is being acted on tomorrow. So why do we apply for the common school loan? Your general obligation bond capacity is determined as a percentage of your assessed valuation and looking at all your debt. So we only had about $1.4 million in general bond capacity. So that was going to be an option. The next option besides a common school loan would be a multi-school corporation, holding corporation with a leaseback. But when you do that, you have three to 5% of the cost of that bond issue in finance advisors, in legal team, in bond rating, in underwriting. So when I ran the numbers of paying 4% on a common school loan where there are, we asked for 3.5, we get 3.5. They do not charge us any finance costs, any underwriting, any legal. If you add, if, when I added the three to 5% with the current interest rates, and they'll probably go up at the end of July when the feds raise them, it was more cost-effective for us to pursue a common school loan with about a half a percent to a percent higher interest rate. But we are saving on those financing costs. So that's why we're going the common school loan route. What we're asking you for tonight is if any paperwork needs signed, that you authorize Mr. Collins, myself, the board officers to negotiate any of those documents right away because our next board meeting is not until the third week of July. So that's what's being presented for your consideration this evening.
This rate that you're talking about on the loan, or we're hearing about tomorrow, is 4%?
It is. Yep. We also, I put in place a recommended seven-year payback for the loan. So the turnaround is fairly quick on the payback of this. If you look in your packet that I laid here placed this evening, the next item in there is showing you where we are on the current bond issue. We have about $350,000 left in it. That could go towards helping with the cost of the gate or the cost of the office area as the separate projects. So we do have some of those bond proceeds left.
Where do I see that? Is that on the?
On the other side of that.
It shows here what we.
Should be under the bottom.
So 1.65 million, the balance of that is 350,000 of the two.
Okay. Okay, yeah, yeah.
So on the back of that, it shows all of the debt that we currently have and how this might increase our debt. And it shows 2019 going up by $264,000 for that one year. Now, with the common school loan, it's a little bit different. They don't give us all of the money to begin with unless they've changed it in years. They don't give it to you all. You draw it down as you need it, and then your payback starts. So it could be that it would be less than that. But I'm assuming we get all of it taken care of, and we have to start making payments mid-year in 2019. So that increases our debt that year by $264,000. Then in '19, it increases at $288,000. But then if you notice, by the time we get to 2021, we have debts start rolling off, I'm sorry, yeah, 2021, and we are reducing our debt. So what does that extra $260,000 equal? It equals about four cents per $100,000 worth of assessed valuation. So, which is $40, $40 on $100,000 worth of assessed valuation is a four-cent rate. Then you have this really numbery document in your board packet, and we have it in this. So the key point I want to point out is at the top. If you look at the example, assessed valuation, $100,000 current property tax. All right. And you go down here to this line that is darkened there. It says 3% tax cap. This is business and personal property, non-town or city. So this is a business that is in Columbia Township, for example. They would experience an increase of $40 per $100,000. Everyone else who's in a town, a city, or in the 1% or 2% property tax caps is already hitting their cap. So they will not see any increase in their property taxes. It will be a shift in how that circuit breaker is allocated, but it will not increase anyone's taxes. At the bottom of that same page, I have calculated what each entity's share of that reallocation of property taxes. It assumes the county keeps their rate the same, the city keeps their rate. Because I don't know what they're going to raise it. So on the school, the school ends up picking up $30 of that $40 in increased circuit breaker impact for any of those entities that are at, I use the 1% level. So the school ends up sharing a bigger portion of the circuit breaker because we have increased ours. So, you know, all of you, you know, your residential property, your homestead, your taxes won't go up because of this. It's just that 3% cap group that is not in a city or a town would experience the increase in their property taxes.
And even those individuals, it's going to roughly be, like you said?
$40 per $100,000. Yes.
And some of those may be large farmers who crops, the value of crop land is going down. I forget, Janie, how much?
I don't, I haven't, yeah.
It's fairly significant. So that's even going to push their taxes down.
So that's, their taxes would go down for that. This would be where their taxes might go back up.
Probably not the same range. So it's a very minimal group of people.
Can you talk to $50?
I'm not, I'm not speaking for the public because I don't know. And I'm, you know, I think all of us would welcome patrons talking to us about school safety. I'm really glad we're having this conversation. And I know, Scott, you're going to go into more detail. I just think about myself. And if I, I mean, I can't imagine a situation where I wouldn't be willing to spend that amount of money to improve the safety of kids in schools, to me. Especially at that level, when we're talking about people that are at that assessed value. So they have those businesses. I think that if it was $40 and it was something that was going towards improved school safety, I would really hope that people would be saying, yeah, I'd be willing to pay that. That's just my opinion.
Lori and I talked several times about paying off a view, Scott, giving the best we can for our kids if we can afford it. And I'm pretty convinced that we can afford it. So I think it's a great idea, starting with safety first. But facilities are way behind here compared to all of our conference schools. And I think it'd be a sense of pride, too, for the community.
It would.
I'd say we owe it to the students to give them, you know, the safest learning experience as possible, you know? We just owe them that.
Total debt schedule is listed here as such that we don't accrue any more debt going forward. Is that correct? Any other projects?
It is. But when you get to 2021.
Our debt drops way off.
Somebody, your finance director should be recommending that you look at some other projects to be adding and issuing debt for at that time. That is a huge drop in that one year. You will have additional needs at that time to be addressing.
Even right now, we're carrying a $2 million debt structure, a debt load, and then it even drops to 172 to still create some margin to contribute roughly $300,000 back and to upgrade.
And we may not, I want to point out, there may not be any impact next year, depending on when the payback has to start, which is somewhat going to be dependent on how fast we get started and how fast we draw down the money. So, you know, it may be that we wait until 2020. We're contributing, this recommendation comes with us, contributing, you know, about a million and a half of local funds from the rainy day for the project. Perhaps we try and kick that repayment out and use our local money first so that some of that shifts into, you know, 2021, 2022 to help level some of that off.
This is kind of a sidebar conversation, but on the rainy day fund, is the budget such that we can't let a rainy day fund go below a certain level?
No, some schools don't have one. They're not in a position to have a rainy day fund. Yeah.
Some of them can't pay their bills.
Yes.
But we don't want to get in that position.
No, no, I like having a healthy rainy day fund.
You know, it's hard for me. I keep a graph on my wall. It's hard for me to see that rainy day fund going down, where since I came, it has gone up.
2017, we weren't able to contribute at all from transportation, which made a difference.
Um, you know, we talked about it, and my recommendation to Scott was we did not have enough information regarding House Bill 1009 and what they were proposing, that I wanted to personally wait until we got into 2018 and see how they were going to have us move the monies and make my recommendation at that time.
Okay. Because I wondered.
That change was in the works.
Okay. Sounds good.
We're at the mercy of the legislature also in so many respects, what we can do. We have an opportunity here to get money very efficiently and effectively, and it solves two problems.
And, you know, I'm a fiscal conservative, as is Janie. This is my home. I would not bring this if I felt this was not going to impact our kids away. I think it will. The aggressive, I commend Janie with, you know, this hopefully will be paid off in my tenure here if you so choose to keep me here, which is pretty impressive in a seven-year payment. Then we're debt-free on this facility. That's a very aggressive, very realistic thing to do. So.
And some of our other debts have not been so fortunate to be paid off so quickly.
That was a different topic.
Yeah, it was.
And the rate, those levies were rate-driven, and there was no circuit breaker. And they were very conservative trying to keep the tax rate as low as possible. With the circuit breaker, you're not going to see those days ever again.
I think to have a bond issue that, like the middle school was paid off in 2023 or something like that, it was done in 2003. You don't see that anymore, and that's probably a good thing.
Forever.
Yeah. It's going to start to fall apart.
Well, if all are ready, we can, we'll tackle these individually since that's what are listed as our action items. So the first action item is the common school loan for CHS Campus Security Initiative. I'd like to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Andy. Do I hear a second? Thank you, Chris. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Now we'll go on to the permission to secure the services of an architect. Entertain a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mark. May I hear a second?
I'll second.
And any further discussion?
Before we go, and I don't want to belabor this meme, but Bill, do you want to share briefly, they specialize, tell them what you specialize in with your job, because that was important to me.
Okay. So our firm was founded in 1961, and Ron, Fanning, and Claire Howie are still active. I encourage them to find other things to do. They're a different generation. I won't be doing that when I'm their age. When they founded Fanning and Howie, they made the decision they were going to focus on learning environments. So that is our, that is our entire focus for this 57 years. I am part of the third generation of leadership. Our primary markets are Indiana and Ohio, and our primary clients are K-12 clients, public school K-12 clients. I think the reason that we connected with you is because Mr. Duncan reached out looking for firms that had done Student Activity Center. We had several recent successful projects, and so we were able to connect in that way. So we're very pleased to be here tonight. This is just the type of project that really excites us because, as Mr. Collins said, there's so many things that are going to happen here, both athletically but educationally, that are going to be really important for CHS. So we're very excited to be here. Thank you.
And Tom Hugger, who's superintendent at Greensburg, he speaks very highly. And when we looked at the product 17 or 18 years later, it's a high-quality, well-thought-out facility, no bells and whistles. It meets our needs, and it's a great facility. So it's just, so thanks, Bill, for sure.
Wrong colors, though.
Well, yeah. You will not get pirate blue.
Spartan red, please.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you all for your time and effort, and we'll be off.
Thank you all very much. We look forward to hearing the good news tomorrow and getting started right away.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one last item before we move through our last reports, and that's our discussion item on school security and safety update. I know it's listed as Ms. Colin Pollard, and I believe that Mr. Collins is going to join in.
Janie prepares this, and feel free to, if you want to jump in, Janie, and share some of the projects.
Sure. One of the interesting points I found out when I was putting this together, I wanted to know, since Columbine in 1999, more than 400 people have been shocked in school incidents nationwide. That's pretty telling of how much we've changed in just about 20 years. Prior to 99, there were incidents, you know, there are some stories about dating back to the 1800s, but, you know, it was not common. Things that we have put in place over the last few years are, you know, we have a school resource officer onsite daily at the high school and the career center. That individual is now polled frequently to provide services at the middle school and even our elementary schools. We've implemented passive security at all of our locations except for Whitewater Career Center, and that is a work in progress. Mr. Hensley and Mr. Duncan are working on the details or are wrestling over that now, currently this summer. We have significantly increased the use of security cameras in our facilities. We've installed a controlled door locking system where you use a fob or a badge to enter the building. We have implemented bi-monthly meetings with our school safety committee, including stakeholders from the local police, the Connersville Police Department, the Indiana State Police, the Sheriff's Department, probation, school administrators, school teachers, maintenance staff participate in those, and representatives from the courts as they have time. We have, during 2017, 2018, we applied for a Safe School Grant for a few additional cameras at the high school. But the largest project were a replacement of the doors unlocked throughout the high school. They are working on that project right now. We had doors that couldn't be locked, that didn't have keys, that didn't have working locks. That was a huge safety issue. So that is a match on the Safe School Grants. This year, I applied for two grants, one from the Criminal Justice Institute and one again from the Safe School Grant. We were notified today, we did not get the Criminal Justice Institute grant. They had $670,000 in money to allocate, and they had over $1.2 million in requests. So I'm still hopeful that we might get some money from the Safe Schools Grant to include a new security officer that would service the elementaries and the middle school and allow the SRO at the high school to remain on campus. All school resource officers do have to attend and be certified in the National School Resource Officer Training Program. We thought the closest one was going to be over at Danville, but our understanding is one's been. but our understanding is one's been added in Newcastle in July. And Joey Loughlin is looking to send some of his sheriff's deputies to be trained since it's close. Additionally, in the Indiana, the Homeland Security School Safe School Grant, we had the SRO, we had an allocation for a, it's called a visitor management system for all of our sites, where if I would present, or as a parent I presented at the high school, you could swipe my driver's license, and it would do a quick check on me to make sure that you wanted to allow me in the building. So we potentially may receive funding for that. In addition to that, I built in a request for a direct 911 access. Basically, it's a push-button system where the secretary can push a button, calls 911 dispatch immediately, and they send an officer to respond to that. And more security cameras at all of our locations were built into that grant. That's still pending. So, again, you've approved for the Common School Loan. If it's approved for the enhancement of the security at the high school, so that would be part of the projects that we're doing that relate to school safety.
Thank you, Janie. We're also looking at, what is, what more do we need to do with training? With the large number of teachers we bring on board each year, we have to be sure that we're providing that training, and our plans are kept up to date. So that will be a big topic for our administrative team, back-to-school admin meeting, looking at, making sure that we're consistent. And then in talking with Joey Loughlin, you know, one thing that they requested to do this summer is to do an active shooter drill in each of our school buildings, and when the kids aren't there, just to get the lay of the land, because a lot of our officers, city and state and county, don't know the floor plans of all of our elementary buildings, so that's something we're working with them on as well. So they all have a good feel for the buildings, and where trouble spots may be. So it's just another way to prepare them. So we've had a really good partnership with our law enforcement in supporting this. So that's another step we're taking now, looking with them, so.
I saw that Noblesville's having a board meeting tonight just concerning school safety. And one of the items they were presenting was new material to board yourself inside your room. So these companies are taking advantage of these tragedies, and anytime there's a school shooting, we probably need to listen to anything they're learning.
Right.
And trying to bring it here if we can.
Also pushing metal detectors, which is, we can go into that later. That's very expensive and very time-consuming.
Greenfield, I saw in the news this morning, their community's pushing for their schools.
I appreciate your input on that, Chris. What were you going to add? I mean, you just go ahead.
Yeah, because you can go wrap a stone system, the marshals use it. You can use the wand that we use, but it's very time-consuming. You'd have to have a mindset on school times getting through something like that. Those are lots I really like.
Do we want to create an airport security, you know, do we want to have a TSA-type situation to get kids to school?
I have parents that talk to me about metal detectors just since the Noblesville shooting. I think that's going to be a topic we're going to be talking a lot more about in the coming months as we seek guidance from the state and federal levels, too, and what kind of funding are they going to be providing for some of these safety measures. There's a lot to think about there, so it's definitely a big topic. Very important. Safety has to be our top priority, and I appreciate your support of this project.
Well, I think it was important that this discussion take place. And I know I've had some patrons question me about safety, and I didn't want any of those folks to think it hasn't been discussed. It's just been discussed behind the scenes. But it is, we need to share with the public that this, that you all have been working on this for some time, obviously by Janie's presentation, and it's just not been something that we've put all together at one time. But boy, that was the time to talk about it, so.
And we have to be careful with the safety plans and who has access to that. So there are certain things we don't want to publicize about our plans that are specific to the high school or middle school or anywhere elementary. So, you know, we have to be very protective of that information as well, because.
We want to make ourselves a target.
Right.
And also, too, I think we want to make kids feel safe. And I think our best line of defense is the kids themselves. If you see something or hear something you don't think is right, somebody's boasting, tell somebody.
See something, say something.
See something, say something. Tell some, tell an adult if you feel uncomfortable about this. And I think as the thing unfolds at Noblesville, there were some kids that are saying, maybe we should have said something. And that's a guilt trip, we don't want to put on our kids. But if something doesn't feel right, let somebody know it doesn't feel right.
Well, thank you both for sharing your information with us. With that, I will move on, if there's no further discussion. To public comments, persons wishing to make the board aware of suggestions, ideas, or comments may address the board at this time. Comments which involve personnel or students must be discussed in the time that, seeing none, we will move on to report items, superintendent discussion group reports, principal director reports, director of human resources report. Nothing more.
Katrina.
Sorry. Sorry. We had our first go-around at the School Transportation Association of Indiana Safety Competition this past Saturday. They've hosted it for 22 years, but this is the first year that we've had a team put together for the rodeo. We had two drivers out of the pool placed in the top 25.
That's cool. The newspaper, I think, had something in the paper about it.
Yeah, they're already talking about.
Maybe it was on Facebook.
Yeah, we posted pictures. They're already talking about going back next year and wanting to challenge Franklin County and Roche County because they don't have teams.
Oh, like that.
I'm really proud of them for their first go-around. Also, with our safety school bus inspection that concluded in April, we had three minor defects that we were allowed to fix on the spot, giving us a 100% pass rating. So it's a job to Alan and Tom for getting us through that. It's Tom's first year with that, and he did excellent.
Well, thank you. That's great. Thank you, Katrina.
Very good.
HR report. Director of Finance report.
Just real quickly, at your places this evening, you should have found that the proposed budget calendar is going to have to be a little bit fluid this year with all these changes and making sure that if any of you want any site visits, let me know, and we can arrange for site visits for you. But that's the proposed timeline. I hope we can hit it. I believe it was at your place this evening?
Yeah, I'm sure it was, but my pile that is now developed.
Yeah. Mine, too.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you. And I appreciate all the board's support this evening. You committed a lot of money for our students in across-the-board activities, from transportation to school safety, and that is really appreciated.
Okay, Assistant Superintendent report.
I'm going to pass.
Superintendent report.
Very briefly, I want to say thank you to Katrina. Those kinds of events, like the rodeo, build camaraderie, morale. And I know those drivers are very competitive, so I'm going to give Charlie Cox, I want that on record, a hard time, because I go way back with Charlie. But it was just a neat event that they were very excited about. And talking with one of the drivers after it happened, she would say, I can't wait till next year. So thanks, Katrina, for bringing those opportunities. And I want to thank you, too. I have a daughter over on the high school campus, and Kim has one son. While he left, she has work coming up. And as a parent, I say thank you for that commitment. It's not something we took lightly, but it means a lot. I just want you to know that. Doing what we're doing for the kids, and this will outlive all of us and leave our mark on what we're doing for the children of Bay County. So thank you.
All right, for the good of the cause, anybody want to recognize anything at this point? No, it's been kind of a long day, so. All right, with that being said, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Warren. Thank you, Chris. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Oppose, same sign.